That's okay.
Yeah.
And they have a pretty few credits for us.
So appropriate.
It's all good. I'm.
Oh, okay. So that one.
Oh, I saw that one. I'm like, oh, that's just.
Yeah.
But I would, but I'm. How they, why is it that you want so many properties? If it goes in the tax. And I would, I would just want to make sure that anything, any program.
Hello, Sam. How are you?
Because we are eight is watching over tax sales. Like. So. You're not doing anything. Oh, no.
Understand.
Yeah. And the other thing is.
Just push me out of the way, Sam. I tend, I tend to spread out.
Houses. They're living there and they're. And so maybe there's some kind of a, you know, I mean, even if it's just sort of, you know, pointing them in the right direction of.
Would you, when we make the presentation to Andy, would you take?
It'll be interesting to see how the V H F A program.
Hopefully. If it's, if it's not set on the camera. Is it a galaxy?
What sort of an impact?
The galaxy just double click the power button. So for like mine? Double click.
To see whether, because we're pointing people in that direction constantly.
Well, if it doesn't.
They still have to be.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. So it's.
Hi, Helene. Hi, Steve.
But, you know, we have a lot of properties that it's.
Stephanie, hi, Stephanie.
Behavioral science.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I like that. Oh. Hi, Sam.
Something that I will be going to work.
Um. The. Yes, and Jake, I have one copy and Jake has the Lucas.
Oh, yeah, it's in a folder on my desk. I'm gonna drop off at his house.
Okay.
No, I just wanted to check that back.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, it's on my, yeah, it's on my desk.
Yep, we got it.
I, I need to just.
Press the power button twice. See what happens real quick. Power button real quick.
Uh huh.
We'll do the social work stuff. Is this the power button? Maybe enough rows?
Right. Okay, just give Teddy an elbow if I didn't.
All right, well, it is seven oh one.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'll call this, uh, this, this meeting of the Berry City Council to order um, on this fifteenth day of March twenty twenty two at seven P M. And in attendance, we have a quorum of council with Council Lozón, Counselor Stockwell, Counselor Wazak, Counselor Booton, Counselor Sean Bell, and Counselor Deering. I'd like to welcome members of the public who are joining us tonight and let everybody know that this meeting is being recorded. Um, the meeting is subject to Vermont Open Meeting Law and will be conducted in accordance with council's adopted rules and procedures, which are available online. If you're joining us on Zoom, uh, thanks for joining us. Please remain muted until recognized to speak. You can raise your hand or use the raise hand function to be recognized during the meeting. And the chat function in the online uh, version is not for commentary and should only be used to notify Counselor Wazak of any technical issues or difficulties. And please know that the city offers online access as a uh, as a convenience. Uh, but if any tech, technical difficulties occur, we will continue with the in-person meeting. And for those of us joining in person, um, printed copies of the agenda are at the back of the room if you want one. And uh, and you can raise your hand to be recognized and counselors will do the same. And I'll call in speakers in order, allowing those who haven't spoken to uh, to speak first. So if you have any questions about procedure, feel free to just raise your hand. And uh, and that takes us to our first item on the agenda is, and that uh, is adjustments uh, to the agenda. Mr. McKenzie, are there any adjustments?
I don't have any. I know that. Item nine G up to the consent agenda?
We'll move nine G up to the consent agenda. Any other adjustments from members of council? And I would, I would uh, like to move up nine D before nine C, the appointments in consideration for uh, the planning commission and regional planning commission, just so we don't have a, have people waiting. Um, I'd also like to just pull the pump station and move that um, after um, after our Berry partnership um, conversation, just to get a little bit of background, since it's a, it's a major project and it's happened in a couple of different phases. And we also got congressionally delegated spending for that as well.
Yeah. Very fortunate.
And uh, and I'll note that I would like to pull the um, the Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District wastewater treatment facility equipment storage memorandum of understanding um, to after the appointments as well. And the reason for that is that um, I'll disclose that my partner is the general manager for the solid waste district. And we'll need to uh, appoint an acting county mayor for that, for that item.
Well, could you just? Could we just move the consent agenda absent that item? On the second item, just.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have no objection to you presiding over that issue in the consent agenda. It's a um.
I, I'd still.
You know, it's, it's an arrangement that we're, we're simply documenting a longstanding arrangement. So it's up to you. If you prefer to step down, that's fine, but I, I don't see the conflict there.
Well.
And you have disclosed.
Yeah, I'd prefer to step down. And you're saying that you don't want it as part of the regular agenda. You want it as part of the, just the.
No, I was just, I was just suggesting breaking it out so that you could vote on the rest of the agenda and then, and then the, the council could vote on the solid waste uh, district separately. But.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, let's, let's break it out.
It would probably be a separate, it would be a consent agenda item right after the rest of the consent agenda is passed.
Okay, well, the reason I was moving it later, just because I know we have some. And appointments tonight, and then we can, we can do that after the uh, after the appointments. So um, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, second.
Uh, motion by Counselor Sean Bell, second by Counselor Stockwell. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda items, which we have as the approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting, March eighth? Approval of the city warrants from the week of Wednesday, March sixteenth, uh, clerk's offices license and permits of which there are none, right?
Correct.
Okay. And uh, ratification of the twenty twenty two state homeland security uh, radios grant application. So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And uh, and I am an aye as well. Um, the consent agenda is passed. The next item on the agenda is a clerk treasure report, madam, or clerk does.
I answered any of that. Um, just a couple of things. Uh, a uh, reminder that water and sewer bills, which went out the beginning of March, are due by the thirty first of March. So come on into the office or use the Dropbox on the front of the building, or you can pay online. There are service charges if you do that. Uh, or mail-in payment. Um, if you mail in payment, it uh, must be postmarked, have a U S postmark uh, of March thirty first or earlier to be considered timely. So. Uh, and then secondly, you may have seen in the paper today, uh, the um, Judd versus City of Berry appeal to the Vermont Supreme Court. Uh, the Supreme Court on issued their ruling last Friday and they upheld the lower court ruling. So uh, that's all I've got.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions for the clerk treasurer?
Thank you.
Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to the uh, liquor control board. Are there any items for liquor control?
No, the only thing I would say is that we're in the period of time where people are submitting their renewals uh, for twenty twenty two. Um, I have a stack of them. We always coordinate with the fire department on um, fire department inspections uh, before they come to council. Uh, at the moment, I only have a couple that have passed their inspection at this stage of the game, but I'm hoping in the next week or two to start bringing in uh, applications for approval.
And that takes us to the city manager's report.
Uh, I have nothing to add.
Okay, well, I, I'd like to wish you congratulations to um, Cody, Stephen, as well as Bill, as well on the Senator Sanders earmark allocation of one hundred and forty three thousand dollars.
A lot of that credit goes to Cody and then with the technical salary, I just sort of. Wait, the magic wand and, and they did the work, but um, Cody has been uh, uh, very proactive and we've been successful now on to funding requests for that project. That's great.
Are there any questions for the manager? Hearing and seeing no question for the manager. I noticed that I have skipped over visitors and communications, so I'll, I'll, I'll take up visit, visitors and communications. Is there anybody, member of the public that would like to speak to an item um, not on the agenda?
Seeing them on Zoom.
Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to uh, there, there's no unfinished business. Our first item of business, service recognition for Andy Superl.
I'll uh, ask Jeff Bergeron to help me pinch hit here. Um, Andy Bergeron is a. Andy. Andy Superdollar is. Most people know. Has been a fixture in our uh, building and community services department for quite some time. Twenty-three years, exactly. It went by just like that. Maybe you're an idiot. You're lucky. You're bad, weren't you? Until now, you're the only one that's still around. But seriously. It was here a long time before I was, uh, but it worked its way up to uh, being auditorium foreman. At that position for a number of years. Uh, so it, it marks the end of a remarkable career. Forty-three years of. Really rare. Well, as Steve said, forty-three years, a long time in one place. Between my previous job, this place, I'm coming up on forty-five, but um, losing Andy, it's gonna be, it's gonna be tough. Andy's got a wealth of knowledge. He knows the building on the back. You know, we, uh, breaker, we trip, we go, Andy, where is Andy? Andy knew where everything was. So it's, it's gonna be a little different without Andy up there. Uh, we'll miss you. We'll miss our banter ring that we used to have. Let's give us your long business number.
Oregon.
Anyway, present this to Andy. I'll sit behind him and then. Don't take a picture. So Andy, on behalf of the Berry City Council, we wish to acknowledge and commemorate the forty-three years of public service for the buildings and community service department, for the residents and taxpayers of the city of Berry. Your dedication and commitment are appreciated. Thank you and congratulations on your noted achievement.
Any, any words of wisdom after forty-three years?
From the time I've seen skating on the gym floor to, to the, uh, the sky, I've seen, I've seen it all.
Donkey basketball.
Donkey basketball, yeah. Donnie Cash. Moscow early. Yeah. A little bit enjoyable.
Well, thank you so much.
Thanks again, Andy. And good luck. Welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Tommy over his side here.
Yeah, sorry, I'm not better looking, okay? Mr. Mayor, if I may, uh, you know, I've known uh, Andy for fifty years. It's been a long time. Andy, no one cared more. Uh, you know, Mr. Mayor, you're gonna, you're gonna miss a rare treat because every once in a while I would get pulled aside. And if Andy didn't think that the city was doing right by its facilities, he would explain to me exactly why and exactly why we were on the wrong path and what, what uh, you know, what ruin it was going to lead to. And uh, what really upset me is that he was always right about it. Uh, Andy, no one cared more than you did. You cared about the kids. I. You know, I remember you letting kids in the auditorium when you were doing your work and it was raining and they couldn't play outside. You let them in, but you had rules. You know, and if, if those kids wanted to enjoy the auditorium and enjoy half an hour or forty-five minutes of exercise, they played by your rules. And your rules were fair, but your rules were strict. So thank you, Andy. Yes. And I'm sorry, he's gonna be home all the time.
One boss to another.
Well, well, thank you, Council of Lozón. And again, thank you. Uh, these are really nice uh, special ceremonies that we have. Forty-three years of service is truly remarkable. So. That takes us to um, a merril proclamation for Jim. Oh, yeah.
I think um.
Oh, is.
Stephanie was holding up her hand.
Is there a Stephanie? There's Stephanie.
Yeah.
Oh, Stephanie there.
Stephanie, Stephanie.
You're beautiful, Steph.
Hi, oh, thank you, Andy. I'm sorry I couldn't be there tonight. Um, but, you know, I've worked with you for thirty-plus years. I've always appreciated how you made sure that every show was set up perfect. Every customer was treated like number one. Um, I've really enjoyed working with you and we will indeed miss you. And I hope you'll come back, um, enjoy some of the shows that we had. But again, I wish you the very, very best and I have enjoyed working with you. And thank you for all the dedication um, that you've given to the city of Berry and wish you the very best. Thank you, Andy.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Well, again, thank you, hearing and seeing none. That takes us to um, item nine B, a merril proclamation for Jim and Larissa Hawes and Rise Up Bakery. I'll, I'll read through this briefly and I want to thank Ruth Ruddenberg, Carolyn and Carolyn Shapiro for um, uh, for working with uh, former mayor uh, Herring and um, and helping prepare this uh, this proclamation. Honoring Jim and Larissa Hawes and Rise Up Bakery. So whereas Jim and Larissa Hawes brought new life to the old cooperative bakery through the creation of Rise Up Bakery. Whereas Jim and Larissa Hawes have started up a wood-fired oven at the bakery, which began baking in nineteen thirteen, but was quiet since the nineteen thirties. Whereas Jim and Larissa have baked thousands of hand-created breads and rolls since opening up Rise Up Bakery. And whereas Jim and Larissa Hawes have brought a new business to the city of Berry. And whereas the Hawesses have provided more than one hundred people with educational hands-on workshops on how to bake bread and had baked bread with them. And whereas Jim and Larissa have provided freshly baked breads to Berry throughout the COVID pandemic, whereas with the help of Carolyn Shapiro and the Board of the Socialist Party Labor Hall, Jim and Larissa Hawes have strengthened a national historic landmark in the city of Berry, Vermont. And whereas Rise Up Bakery has restored to the Socialist Labor Party Hall a crucial part of his, its historical heritage, the Union Cooperative Store Bakery. Whereas the Hawes have brought Ukrainian pride and solidarity to Berry during the savage invasion of Ukraine and threats to their family there. And whereas the Hawesses have launched a fundraising effort to send essentials like hygiene products, clothes, food, first aid, and medications to Ukraine. Now therefore, be it resolved that I J Hammerick do hereby proclaim on this fifteenth day of March twenty twenty-two, the good works of Jim and Larissa Oz for bringing this new spark of creation, delicious bread and culture to our city, as well as international aid and support from Ukraine. And I'll, I'll share with council that um, I'm going to be delivering this proclamation to them uh, Friday at five P M. At the Labor Hall, uh, Labor Hall Bakery and all are welcome to join if you'd like to. So the next item of new business is, uh, is, that would be review of and approval of the, oh, no, 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 the review and discussion of this. I'm sorry, I'm getting mixed up.
Yeah.
I think ninety.
Ninety.
Nine.
Yeah, that's right. Appointments, thank you.
Yeah.
Andrew McKenzie, appointments for consideration and action. And so the first um, appointment for consideration is Rebecca, Becky Wig uh, for the planning commission. Um, Becky, if you could uh, come forward.
Counsel, you have uh, her uh, volunteer application in your packet with her background and she's been invited as his routine to come and meet with the council and just tell us a little bit about herself and let the council ask any questions if I have and act on her appointment.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Sure. Uh, my name is Rebecca Wig. My husband and I moved to Berry almost two years ago. Um, and I was looking for a way to get involved in the community uh, and heard about some uh, openings on the planning commission. So uh, wanted to see if I could join um, and help support the work that the city is doing.
Well, thank you. Are there any questions? Members of the city council? Counsel Lozón?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You work with Noel McKay.
Yes.
Former Commissioner McKay.
Yes, yep.
Did a lot of good work here in Berry, so she's got some stories to sell. May I call you Becky?
Yes, yep.
So Becky, what, what excites you most about uh, the planning commission?
Well, so um, I think what was interesting to me is how critical it is to um, helping the city realize that the city plan and the um. It was the town plan, I guess, the city plan, that kind of laid out all of the priorities and what the city would like to see happen. Um, and just how much the commission needed to play a role in that. Before we moved to Berry, we were living in Marshfield and I spent a couple of years on the village board of trustees. And it was really a great opportunity to get to know the town as well as support kind of the inner workings that kept things humming that people didn't really know were happening. And it just made life easy. The water was running, the sewers worked. Um, because we had volunteers and folks who were kind of, you know, making all of that happen. Um, and I, and I think the planning commission is an opportunity to do that same thing here in Berry, um, to kind of bring, bring the city's vision to life and help make it a reality.
Thank you very much. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
This is a question I ask whenever I hear anyone say they've moved to Berry in the nearby. What's your favorite part about living in Berry now?
Um, I really love that our community is walkable. Um, so we were in Marshfield, we were close to the village, but we were on busy streets, so it wasn't very walkable. I love that I can walk out the door and take our dogs for a walk and run into our neighbors and have a conversation and get to the um, cow pasture and kind of have the best of both things, the, the good restaurants, good food, and then be able to, you know, go for a hike without getting in the car.
Thank you.
Are there any other quick, Counsel Deering?
Sure. Um, what type of values do you think you can bring to the planning commission?
What kind of values?
Personal, what kind of personal things do you think here you can bring to the value of the commission?
Sure. Um, let's see. So I'm uh, when I do something, I, I do it uh, wholeheartedly and kind of uh, from start to finish. Uh, and I think that is something that I would bring to the commission is um, being present, being an active participant and really um, trying to do what I can to make uh, whatever needs to happen a reality as part of the commission.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion uh, by Counselor Booton and the second by Counselor Lozón. Uh, is there any further discussion on this appointment? All those in favor, sign, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Well, thank you very much.
Aye, thank you, Becky. Yep. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the appointment of uh, our consideration and action for the appointment of Michael Hellian as Berry City's rep to the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission's Transportation Advisory Committee. And I see uh, yeah, yeah. Michael Hellian is.
I am remote, sorry, guys.
Yeah, so uh, Mr. Ellian, can you speak a little bit to why you're interested in appointment to the transportation advisory committee?
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
Planning commission?
Uh, yeah, I've been on Berry City's Transportation Advisory Committee for, I think, about a year and a half, and I'm currently serving as chair of that committee. Um, I went to uh, a meeting uh, of the uh, the uh, the regional transportation advisory committee uh, recently. And uh, noticed in retrospect that we don't have anybody there. And so I said to myself, I don't know, I could, that, it would be useful to have someone there. And as, as chair of the TAC, it seems to make, sorry, uh, acronyms, I apologize. Um, uh, it's here at the Transportation Advisory Committee. It, it seems like a good point of contact for the regional body. Um, and my, my intention uh, in terms of joining is uh, is, is two things primarily. Uh, one is to learn what activities are taking place in terms of uh, transportation infrastructure in the region as a whole. And the other part is to, to represent uh, communities like ours. I mean, uh, predominantly urban communities are a, a small percentage of the number of communities, but really a big percentage of the number of people who live in them. And so I think that having a resident, uh, you know, to, to, to go forward and speak to that, uh, is going to be pretty valuable at the regional level.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions from members of council? Uh, Counsel Lozón?
Thank you. Um, hey, Michael, how are you?
Hey, Tom.
Have you, have you had an opportunity to take a look at the uh, Central Vermont Regional Plan?
Uh, it. I don't think I've looked at the, at, at the plan. I mean, my um. I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure exactly how much of that overlays onto the, the role of the TAC, because I, at, at the RPC level, because I think that it's more of, you know, giving feedback to their um, their professionals about what sort of uh, you know, what the representatives from the communities want in terms of transportation. It's something I'm, I've, you know, uh, I'm interested in doing it. I haven't seen it.
Got you. Thank you. All set.
Are there any other questions? Members of council. Okay, is there a motion?
So. Or second.
Okay, moves by Counselor Sean Bell, seconded by Counselor Stockwell. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, signal, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And I, I as well. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Um, so I, I believe that can take us to the um.
C, I think is next.
The Berry Partnership uh, Council Liaison. And I prepared a, a cover memo for this item. Uh, received an email from uh, Tracy Bruce requesting that Counselor Booton be reappointed uh, as the council's liaison to the um, to the Berry Partnership. Michael, would you like to speak?
Sure. So I'm actually not appointed to this uh, as a liaison. Um, so this would be a new appointment.
Um, and, and as I understood it, the role of the um, having a counselor at the Berry Partnership is uh, just to uh, build connections and ties and communication between the city.
And I already have a really good connection to the Berry Partnership. Um, you know, I donate to it annually and uh, it actually comes right out of my paycheck. I fully support uh, the partnership and all its activities. I have a really good relationship with Tracy and obviously I have a really good relationship with the president.
Are, is there a nomination? Oh, Counsel.
Yeah, I would uh, I would make that nomination.
Seconded.
It is conditioned, however, on someone wearing a large chicken suit.
You know, I've done that once for you. Did that for Sue Higbee.
So I think the chicken suit is in, well, not yet.
Uh, I'll, I'll say this. Unfortunately, you're not going to get that wish because they don't make them in my size anymore.
You want to bet?
Counsel Lozón will take that challenge. Yeah, we have a nomination from Counsel Lozón, the second. Uh, Counselor Wazak, all those in favor of the nomination, uh, or I, if uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. Um, I think we can move to the appointment at this point. Um, is there a motion to point?
There is. Second.
Motion by Counsel Wazak, seconded by Counsel Lozón. Is there any just further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Uh, I'm an aye as well. As have it. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the, I believe, the approval of the Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District Berry wastewater treatment facility. But before that, council needs, council needs to determine who's, who can serve as mayor. And, and Clerk Dawes also pointed out uh, today that there will be But before that, council needs, the council needs to determine who's who can serve as mayor and clerk Dawes also pointed out today that there will be. Occasions where, you know, I may be away on vacation and the warrants need to be signed. So I think this this item. Could be an appointment for the year. Councillor Wasazak?
Yeah, so the mayor and I spoke on the phone about this and, um, you know. Past practice has been the most senior councillor just steps into that role in an informal way. But there is language in the charter that I was not aware of where that actually has to be a council appointment. So I would be, I would like to nominate councillor Booton to continue to do that as just codifying what has been past practice of the council.
And I'll second that.
There's a nomination for councillor Booton and a second by by councillor by. We have a nomination from councillor Wasazak and the second by councillor Lozón. For councillor Booton, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Most I'm as I as well, most carries. Are there any other nominations? Hearing and seeing none. Is there a motion to point?
So moved.
Motion by councillor Lozón, seconded by councillor Stockwell. Is there any further discussion?
I will hold you accountable the entire time.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. I'm as I as well, motion carries, as have it. And so councillor Booton, I'm going to step out.
All right.
This items. On the consideration.
Can you open up the desk drawer and give me the gavel?
Objection from the council.
Uh, so I done. Uh, approval of Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District. Slash Berry City Water Treatment Facility Equipment Storage Mem- Memor- memorandum of understanding. Steve?
Yeah, um, all this does is it's really a perfunctory. Formalization of what I understand is a is a practice that has gone on for a number of years. It's some time ago, I think it might even been before my arrival here. The, I believe the solid waste district had asked. Our superintendent of water and wastewater, Steve McKelley, if. There was space available at the wastewater plant to for a couple of storage. Containers and I think there's one vehicle that they have down there and. Steve said, yes, it was a very informal arrangement. And has gone on a number of years. We're working very closely now with the solid waste district and. Lisa Liotta, the the director on the DPW campus, the Department of Public Works Campus Relocation. We're coordinating probably monthly because if we're jointly successful. The solid waste district would like to. Co-locate a household hazardous waste facility. And we're working towards that mutual objective. There's still a lot of steps to go, but during the course of that that coordination. It became evident to Lisa that. This informal practice has been going on and so she thought that would be a good idea to memorialize it. We're fine with that. I'm working through that, the the you, the the agreement you have, the MOU you have in front of you has an arbitration clause in it. My experience tells me that we would have a mediation clause rather than arbitration. She's fine with that. We're just working through the language. It's a, it's a minor thing, so the substance of the agreement is in front of you. I would certainly recommend it's approval.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
Uh, my company owns the facility, solid waste facility at five forty North Main Street. We leased that facility to the solid waste management district. That lease is not contingent upon any sort of cooperation. From the city of Berry, therefore I have disclosed the relationship and I do intend to vote.
Okay.
Unless council feels otherwise.
I have no problem.
Okay, all right, so motion.
Withdrawn?
No, oh no, you made a motion. Okay, and second was. Sam, all right. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. As does. What?
You have to ask anyone to vote.
Oh, oh, whoops, sorry, anybody oppose? Motion passes. Jake, you can come back in.
We need a little bell.
Sorry, I am so sorry, everybody.
Spiraling out of control.
To take him out of that seat.
At what point did we lose control?
Listen.
He was jumping at the bits for that.
The first time I've hit it.
And so I believe that takes us to authorizing the manager to execute the North Main Pump Station Step Three Construction Phase Engineering Agreement. And I thought since this is a big, big project and has had multiple phases and now we have now earmarked funding to stick. So we're all aware, yes, we're.
We're about on the five year, five yard line with this project. This is, as the title indicates, this is replacement of the. Fifty-three-year-old end-of-life wastewater pump station is down on the Berry Mount Pay Road. Just this side of Arnhem's on the railroad track side. It. It it needs to be replaced. We've been, this is, like I said, the, we're at the five-yard line. This is what's called strep, step three in the typical. Infrastructure project implementation phase. Council has approved all previous. Steps, step one, step two, the grant applications for both steps, actually the grant application for step three. All of the, actually, this is really not a new agreement as much as it is as an amendment to the base agreement started at. Beginning of this project. It is a, it is a mind-numbing sixty-two-page document, but it's it's the standard. Agreement format used by the consulting industry and mandated by the state of Vermont Agency of Natural Resources. Department of Environmental Conservation. So the only thing that changes from from step to step to step is the. Is the scope of work that's appropriate for the steps. Step one is planning, step two is design and step three is construction. With with good fortune, we hope to be out to bid within the next thirty days to this project, certainly thirty to forty-five days. This is. One, one of two last administrative pieces we need to put in place. The the state needs to know that the city has approved the agreement. The disagreement amount is, I think, sixty-three thousand dollars. And what this is for is to. Provide the mechanism for the consulting engineer who has designed the project, planned to design the project. Now to monitor it during construction and also. Provide all of the technical administrative support that's required for such a project like this. With luck, good fortune, I shouldn't say luck, with good fortune. Have the project. On the pump station, operational by late fall, a lot of that now is impacted by delivery schedules. Adversely impacted by COVID, so we'll have to see how that goes. That that's our, that's our goal. I think that's, uh, that's the.
And this is funded by.
Yes, the 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 current of. Project budget is around nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars and round numbers has increased significantly since we started this planning process. Again, largely impacted by COVID. Uh, it's funded by at least three funding mechanisms. The first is the. Congressional earmark from. Senator Sanders, I want to get these in the right order. Senator Sanders, the second is from the congressional earmark. That we just realized we rewarded, I think we got that announcement in the last week. And.
This is second, a second earmark?
Yes.
Yeah.
Both of them in the, the first is in about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollar range, the second is a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And then the balance, whatever that is, will be covered, more than covered by the bond passed two years ago, the infrastructure bond. Which had a million fifty thousand dollar. Allocation in the bond for this, so the financing is more than solidly in place. And we're, we're, we're on. Sure, it's getting constructed, we're on the home stretch to get there. We're just chomping at the bits to get there.
And then Northern Borders Regional Commission, that was another layer of funding.
Well, I I I misstated, the first one. Said was Sanders, that that actually is the second piece of funding that just came in. The first was Northern Borders Regional Commission. That's the hundred and sixteen thousand dollar one. Sanders congressional earmark is a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars and then the balances. With the six.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council or? Any questions from the public? Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion to approve, authorize the manager to execute the North Main Pump Station? Step Three Construction Phase Engineering Agreement and the amount says presented.
So move back, second.
Motion by councillor Stockwell, seconded by councillor Wasazak. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Guys have it, I'm an aye as well. And that takes, in motion carries, that takes us to the next item of business, which is to approve the purchase of a. Of the twenty twenty-two police cruiser presented by Deputy Chief Eastman. Deputy Chief Eastman, would you be willing to? Introduce this item?
It's, it's really. Deputy Chief Eastman takes the lead on the cruiser purchases.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, since two thousand eighteen, we've been purchasing vehicles through MHQ. The sole source, we've been getting approval to do that. I I'm asking to get approval of that again. This would be for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three cruiser. Asking for delivery on July first. What I'm looking for is to continue the. What we've been doing with these cruisers since twenty eighteen. MHQ basically is a company that has enhanced Massachusetts state bid. So the the pricing is pretty reasonable with them. Back in twenty eighteen, I did a comparison on how much it would cost. To put new equipment into the cruisers along with the installers that we've been, we had been using at the time. Demand hours to put together these vehicles and pay for that equipment. Overall, I actually found that MHQ was actually the, it was pretty comparable pricing, but MHQ would. Ended up being a a lower price for us. The advantage of MHQ as well is these vehicles come fully equipped and fully manufactured when we go pick them up. So they're ready for the road immediately, other than taking them over to get them striped. At Yipes, where we keep the local, we keep it local, getting them striped. For obvious reasons, if the vehicles get damaged in any way, Yipes can repair the damages to them. But we found that these vehicles are tremendously well-crafted vehicles. Individuals working on these vehicles, if you've been noted, that the the wiring, construction, and all the vehicles are phenomenal. They've got very. Lots of features that make it safer for the office officers to include magnetic microphones. Things that the help officer guide their hand to the the. To putting the microphone up to to give safer safer operation of the vehicle. The vehicles also have. Other features that assist the officers, such as lighting for security lighting when they do roadside stops. They can have safety features such as when they open the gates, the the lights on the top transfer to the back tailgates. So it's safer for the officers. There's many features I could go into with the vehicles, but they're just tremendously crafted vehicles. And just requesting to get prior approval, the reason why I'm asking for prior approval so early is because of the supply chain issues. There's concerns on whether or not we'll be able to get the parts that we need and secure the vehicle. So looking for approval to secure that vehicle ahead of time. Thank you for listening.
You Deputy Chief Eastman, and and this is a budgeted item in the equipment budget? Or is this to be funded by the FY twenty-two fund surplus?
Uh, it comes out of the capital equipment and probably would come out of the capital reserve from the fiscal year twenty-one funding. Okay, now that. But the, at the end of the discussion in the late fall, early December, the the council decision was to aggregate. The individual items that were requested allocated to a capital, just a capital fund. And then make these kinds of purchases out of that fund, approved by the council one at a time.
Are there any questions from council? From this, I see councillor Wasazak.
Um, yeah, Larry, could you just remind me what the. The lifespan was, was it three years?
Lifespan for the cruisers? They can't stay in service?
Yes.
Um, we actually keep the vehicles in service for six years. What we do is we have four frontline vehicles. That eventually get rotated out into detailed vehicles. So if we have governor highway safety detail. Details that require vehicles that we don't take the frontline cars, the the older vehicles get rotated out into that. So we really keep them, we keep them frontline vehicles for four years, but overall utilize them for six.
Thank you, I couldn't remember the numbers. I know we had discussed it before.
And Larry, correct me if I'm wrong, but but what we all tend to forget is these cruisers are used twenty-four seven. There there are three shifts a day, uh, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, so in three years, they see an awful lot of use. And and travel, but the historic program has been to repurpose or reallocate them. Uh, in a. Descending fashion, if you will, so we get the six years out of the vehicle.
Absolutely, that's actually a very good point, because if we don't keep the rotation cycle going on these vehicles, they do. Gain tremendous amount of mileage. By the time we rotate them into detailed vehicles. Most of the vehicles usually have have upwards of a hundred thousand miles on them. And we're talking hard mileage because police work is abusive to vehicles, vehicles running constantly. Vehicles responding to emergency calls with obviously more stress on the engines and everything else than. A standard vehicle, so it is very important to certainly keep the those vehicles rotating through that cycle.
I see a question from Bern Rose.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe. The manager, Steve, you could help me with this question. I don't have a problem with the vehicle purchase, but I was trying to understand the funding mechanism for it. And I'm wondering, is that the same funding mechanism that we buy the sidewalk plows? And if so, are we going to be buying any more of the. Sidewalk plows so that we're not using the Bobcats, which break up the sidewalks? So if you could speak to that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
The the plan is to buy. More, I'll refer to it by the affectionate name, more Kermit's. The new articulated, new, I think we've had that now for a couple of years, a year and a half.
Yeah.
The new sidewalk plows are articulated, rubber tire. They're more mobile, they're more maneuverable, they're faster to travel through, either even faster on a plowing route. So the plan is to, is to acquire at least one more. Um, I would have to check with Bill if 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 back over time, we would get two more and have a fleet of three. I can't tell you off the top of my head, Vern, what that, what the schedule is for doing that, but the plan is to. Re rededicate the Bobcats to. Field activities that they're more suited for and improve all around the sidewalk plow capability.
Thank you. So that's a part of the 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 plan of purchasing. Those are in the plan now.
I'm going to give you a cautious, I think so, without having reviewed the plan recently. I I I'm not going to say absolutely, but I think there, and that's part, frankly, that's part of, in fact, at the department head meeting this morning. I. Forewarned, if you will, the department has that we now. forewarned, if you will, the department heads that we now need to be, in the next month or two, taking a look at the capital equipment plan. Re-update it for fiscal year twenty-three, which starts in July. So any capital plan, in particular, the capital equipment plan, is something that needs to be monitored and managed every year. There, we have been doing that every time we our assets change, whatever vehicle it is, or whatever we take stuff off that's been taken out of service, we add in those things that we have purchased with council approval. So that happens throughout the year, but we need to be, as we get to the beginning of the new fiscal year, we need to take a focused look and make sure it's updated.
Thank you. I I appreciate that, because I think the Kermit has a better result and makes the streets more manageable for walk, people who are walking, and we do want to encourage people to walk. And and it's, it also looked like, from what Bill had said, that they don't tear the sidewalks up as much, so there's less sidewalk repair. So it also saves money as well as doing a better job. So I'd really like to be able to hope that we can get those operational and out out there again this year. Thank you.
Very well made, Bern, and but today we're we're talking, we're talking about the the cruiser and and this is definitely a good point for the the equipment equipment budget schedule and something that has we talked about during the budget session. I think the Burns, to get directly to Burn's question, though, this cruiser is being purchased with FY twenty-two fund surplus. It is not a budgeted expense. It's not.
Right. It's not coming out of the general fund. It is a capital purchase. It's actually the fiscal twenty-one fund balance. Yeah, that's okay. So it's coming out of a capital allocation, not the not the general fund, not the operating budget.
And and it's, and so this is a unb- un, well, it's it's budgeted.
It's a, it's a planned but unbudgeted out of the general fund. It's it's the, it's certainly provided for in the capital fund.
Okay, so this is when we were looking at the FY twenty-one fund list and council may remember this, there, we were discussing, it was moving around a little bit. We were discussing capital planning. We were discussing the cruisers. There's two hundred thousand dollars for rainy day fund as well. And then there were some equipment items.
Yes, but I think where the, not I think, I know where the castle ended up is of the five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar fiscal year twenty-one fund balance. Up to a certain point, the council had authorized, I'm going to say sixty or seventy thousand dollars worth of individual purchases. And then rather than trying to pre-allocate individual expenses, the council opted to say, okay, we're going to put the balance in a in in a capital reserve, if you will, and that's where we will use to at least help our capital needs. As we've already spoken to, the passage of the sales tax is huge and will substantially help address our capital needs. I think I've been clear in the past, the the sales tax is not the end all be all, it's not the total funding source we're going to need in the future. But it's a big step in the in the right direction. So if we didn't have if we didn't have the fiscal year twenty-one fund balance to pay for this cruiser fund, it would cruiser it would come out of the street sidewalks capital allocation ballot item that that is voted every year by the voters. And at some point we'll be using that the funds received from the sales tax to fund additional vehicle purchases, additional capital improvements and so on. It's a, it's a the the sales tax was promoted on the basis that it's use would be strictly related to capital equipment, infrastructure and capital.
And so for the FY twenty-one fund balance, if people like Bern or members of the public or members of council want to advocate for a particular piece of equipment, that discussion should go through staff because staff's going to come back with those purchase requests in the coming months.
Yes, and we should, we should we collectively, staff and and council, staff should be coming to council to say, okay, we have these reserves. What are our most immediate capital needs, equipment needs? And jointly decide what what is the immediate priority and and how much comes out of which pocket? Which capital pocket?
There are any further questions from members of council?
Other than a motion.
Second. So there's a motion and a second, I I understand to approve a waiver from our procurement policy to allow for a sole source procurement of this of this cruiser in the amount of sixty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-three cents, or ninety-nine cents? Yeah, so motion by council, those on second by council, booting, is that motion correct?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. I'm as I as well, the motion carries. The next item of business.
Thank you, Frau.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is announcements and upcoming events. Oh, what's F?
The strategic plan.
Yeah, oh, this, of course. So that's the review and discussion of strategic planning contracts. So there's no action.
No action. I just as we've talked in the past about providing as much advanced notice as we can to council, I thought it would be helpful to at least put this on the agenda for discussion. I don't have any extended presentation to make. The the proposal review team and the manager met with Jim Person, who is the project manager for Field. It's actually Field Partners. I am pronouncing it file, but it's Field Partners. Last Wednesday, we generally reviewed the contract and then and then worked to give him some insight as to the background for the reason the council wanted to proceed with a strategic plan. They are, but I wanted, the the scope, the scope of the contract essentially mirrors the scope in the proposals that the proposal team reviewed. The field was the top recommended firm of the three in the shortlist. So if you had reviewed the proposal, the scope of the contract pretty much mirrors that. Except we've adjusted dates just because of the the time difference between the, when the proposal was submitted and when we're ready to move ahead. And actually, this contract, I have the same thing. They have an arbitration clause. Requested, recommended that we switch that out for a mediation clause. Jim is talking with the owner of the firm about that. It's not a, it's not a deal breaker by any means, but.
Are there any, are there any questions? Council goes on.
Is with me. Wouldn't sign this with an arbitration clause, not
Okay.
not crazy about section eight, not crazy about section ten, don't have an issue with mediation.
Yeah, mediation is, I think, is mostly.
Is not necessarily, I mean, it's a settlement discussion, for lack of of a better word. Arbitration is a little different. And then, of course, you have a court or jury trial. And like I said, just not wild about the limitation of liability. I don't know if you read through sec- but section eight and section ten, I don't want to take up a lot of time this evening, Mr. Mayor, so however you want to proceed with that, but those are just the two sections that.
Well, yeah, let's take those up and turn. So the section A is limitation of liability. What about that is?
Pretty broad. So notwithstanding any provision here into the contractor, to the contrary, I O Partners LLC shall not be responsible for any special incidental consequential punitive tort or exemplary damages, including without limitation, loss of profits, loss of business, loss of goodwill arising out of or in connection with this agreement, or any services performed hereunder, whether or not the city of Barry, Vermont has been advised of the possibility of such damages. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's a, I mean, I'm not going to, if the council has an issue with that clause, we can negotiate a revision. If if this were a different type of contract, if this were for a construction project or purchase of equipment or something, I would be more concerned. I think the the work product and the potential for damages is pretty benign. So I wasn't terribly concerned about that, but but I can talk with them.
It it's just pretty broad. And whenever I read a clause like that in a contract, I always ask myself, why is it so broad?
Well, it's because of this, we, you know, it's because of their attorneys. It's because of their professional. You know, I was on that side of the fence at one time.
And then, you know, under, like I said, arbitration, I mean, we'd have to go to Connecticut. New, matter of fact, more.
In the, in the, this.
We'd have to go to, yeah, I mean, so it was inconsistent. It talks about the governing law in section fourteen, but then in ten, it it was talking about media arbitrating in Connecticut.
Good, good catch. I didn't catch that. I caught.
Oh, Hartford, Connecticut. Nothing against Hartford, by the way.
In fourteen, in fourteen, their original was the state of Connecticut. I changed that to the state of Illinois. I didn't catch it in. But but since we're revamping that clause anyways, or trying to, that shouldn't be an issue. But actually, this has proved to be good setup. We've had the opportunity to discuss it, pick up a couple of glitches and assuming they can respond, I will be prepared to bring it on the agenda next week for action.
Thank you. Manager McKenzie, councillor Wazza.
I'm acknowledging that Mr. Burson has his hand up. I'll just, he might answer a question that I have a second. Yes, yeah. Just so one other thing on the arbitration, number ten, there is a typo just at the very bottom of the paragraph. It says nine 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 nine, the party receiving such notice. And that's just a typing error. I I agree with councillor Laozong, mediation's better than arbitration. It's just a general clause.
I apologize, Jim. I didn't see you there. And I know.
When I heard, when I heard chicken suit earlier, I kind of minimized the screen. I just was worried.
Before Ms. Rosen goes, just one other thing. I I don't have a problem with the liability section. I I agree that it's pretty broad and I I acknowledge and and am a similar person myself, that whenever I see something written with very broad language that, you know, puts up a red flag and it's a worthy question. But at the end of the day, I see this entire process as just advice. We make the final, we as the governing body make the final decision. And if we get no offense, if we get bad advice, no one thinks to second guess it, we do it and then we lose some money. I mean, that's on us. It's up to us to make these decisions ultimately. So I'm, you know, I I'd be a yes vote with it if the language, if if councillor Laozong feels like the language should be tightened up a bit, I'm fine with that as well, but I'm not necessarily bothered with how it's written right now.
Mr. Benson?
Person.
Person.
I I'm sorry, meant to lower my hands, wanted to let you know I was here to hear the feedback and you know, if the council wants to tighten up that language, we'll fix up the typos and figure out you know, Hartford versus wherever else, well, we can sort that out as well, or I was a mediation will sort of, you know, create a different set of set of requirements. So we can, I'm sure we can make this all work in short order.
We can, we can talk. Let's talk tomorrow, Jim, or no later than Thursday. It's just a matter of where we'll both find a hole in our schedules at the same time.
Not a problem. And, you know, we are looking forward to getting started with you as soon as possible, looking at April first to sort of wrap up this process by the end of July. That gives you some continuity with your new city manager and also has enough time, hopefully, for you to for the new members of the council to be on board and and sort of up to speed and sort of fully engage in the process.
Are there, on on terms of process, I had a question about, there was a limit on meeting with the number of department heads, and I think, I think it might have said seven or nine were listed. Does that encompass all of the department heads?
Yes.
Yeah.
Think so. And I, and I don't want to put my foot in your mouth, Jim, but if it turned about to be ten instead of nine, I don't really think that's going to be a tripwire.
I will make it work to make sure that we get that input, not not to worry, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any other questions? From council?
So it'll come back?
Yeah. Okay, no action tonight, wasn't warned for action.
Okay.
So being we can work out the final details in the next few days, it'll be on the agenda for, I I'm going to put it on the agenda. If for some reason we just can't finalize the details by the end of the week, we'll just defer it next week, but
Got you.
The plan is to get it executed. I have the authorization to execute.
And Manager McKenzie is a contract expert. Do you have any concerns about arbitration or or limitation of liability?
Well, my my concern, I'm not sure is the word, but I think I don't hold myself out to be a contract lawyer, but have worked with contracts for forty-seven years and one of the first things we always do is try to eliminate the arbitration clause. It's a very structured, very, I'll say, unforgiving process. It's and and we have in 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 my former life as a consulting engineer, we would utilize mediation as at least the initial dispute resolution methodology. And if that doesn't work, then 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 you can decide what the next choice is, but generally, the preference from my experience has been to to utilize mediation. And and I, and we can work, Jim, I don't know that a mediation is is, I guess the other point I'm going to make is that, you know, we've used mediation as a dispute resolution in our contract bargaining negotiations process, and we've used that, at least while I've been here, probably four or five times. And and in every instance, it has been successful. There was one instance when we had to schedule two sessions, but it's just a it's a process that's a little bit more user friendly, I think, to both sides.
And as I, as I understand it, this is a pretty straightforward planning services contract, but it does sound like there's clear concerns about the arbitration section. Yeah. Potentially opportunities to tighten up the limitations of liability section. In terms of the schedule, if we were to pencil in intentionally times when council would need to would need to meet starting in April, what would these sessions look like? Just to establish realistic expectations about what type of time commitment is council talking about here?
I'll let you speak to that.
What I would say is is this to the council, that the the approach contemplates a small subcommittee of a couple of leadership staff, a couple of council members to sort of guide the planning process, but not to make ultimate decisions, to really sort of define the listening that we're going to do, the information we're going to gather. We have contemplated thirty-minute phone interviews with each council member to sort of get their perspectives sort of individually on their own, and we'll sort of push all that, move all that information together as well as a series of listening and feedback from your committees, from leadership staff, review of your core documents, all in Barry, those kinds of things. And we're probably looking at a couple of hour commitment. My guess is probably late June, early July, where we're able to sort of consolidate all this information, come back, set some priorities, of to sort of sequence this with the with the the arrival of the new town manager, any sort of overlap, just to sort of make sure that there's continuity here, because we want to make sure that there's buy-in on both sides with new leadership and that you know, this is not a document that sits on a shelf, but really sort of provides some guidance and structure and support for you. So I think some of the nuances of that timing will be based on when you were able to have a new town manager on board. But I think that, and but I think otherwise, Mr. Mayor, I think we could probably just sort of put some routine updates into your regularly scheduled meetings so that we're really sort of not pulling on folks more than we have to. That's a memo to you.
Thank you for that summary. Are there any other questions from council or concerns? Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to announcements.
Thank you, Jim.
Upcoming events. Thank you.
Thanks.
And so we'll, we'll see that contract potentially on March twenty-second.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, unless we don't iron out the details in the next few days, but that's. Yeah, unless we don't iron out the details in the next few days, but that's the plan.
So in terms of announcements, just to give a preview of some of the upcoming agenda items, um, and if you, if council wants to share any items that they're planning to prepare, um, uh, that they would like to see on a future agenda, um, now is a good time to talk about it, but, uh, Manager McKenzie included some in his uh, manager's report, but, uh, we will be looking at a schedule, uh, to take us through March, uh, town meeting day of twenty twenty-three. Um, and it'd be a tentative schedule, certainly things might need to adapt and shift and change as the year goes on, but at least we'll know that we have, uh, 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 what to put in our calendars and, uh, try to strive for that, uh, continuity with that three meetings per month schedule. Um, and, and I know Lucas was trying to, to some extent, Mayor Herring was trying to structure some more items, or we had talked about structuring some more items for workshops or hearings on a third meeting and focusing more business. Um, I'm not sure if that'll be possible, what the, I'll, I'll be talking with Manager McKenzie and Clerk Dawes, we might need to have three business meetings like we, like we have been. Um, we'll get that schedule um, on, on the next, uh, agenda. There's also going to be an update from the city manager task force. Um, from Rick Taft and the, uh, the chair and vice chair, there will, there will be an appointment for the task force council, or at least a discussion of that. Um, we're going to have, uh, an opportunity for a member of council to serve, um, with councillor Stockwell and I on a, a housing working group that, um, for the seat that Mayor Herring vacated. And, uh, and Manager McKenzie is going to be bringing a public outreach process and establishment of the Community Innovation Rescue Plan Act funding task force. Next, yeah, next week. Are there any other items, um, that you would like to see in the upcoming agendas?
Well, I was just thinking about a pretty low level ordinance or policy that would be that the day before an election, the auditorium isn't, is available to the city clerk. But I thought I'd check with Jeff first, we just thought.
Well, no, I mean, that's, 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 that's serious. I mean, the, the clash, if you will, is between town meeting day and the high school tournament schedule, which are pretty established, pretty rigid. Um, I, I, as much as it has probably been, uh, a burden for Carol and the, and the staff and councils who have helped, uh, I think that would be a huge ask and not received well from BPA, and quite frankly, I don't think we want to do anything that would make them reconsider. My guess is, and it's just a guess, but my guess is, uh, if schedule became an issue, they would find a different venue. And we don't, that's two weeks of solid auditorium revenue, which we don't, we just don't want to lose.
So it sounds like, uh, there, you know, there's some interest in discussing town meeting day twenty twenty-three and, and not tonight, but, uh, uh, we can, and we potentially look into that with staff, um, in between meetings and figure out if there's an opportunity to find a win-win, council blows on.
Uh, we'd have an easier time moving town meeting day. You may just want to. We've, we've had that discussion before, but, but you go ahead, Mayor. Let me know how it turns out.
I think there was one year when because of, you know, because of the way the dates worked and the, the school holiday worked and everything, where we, we didn't have to. And then, of course, the last two year, or the last year because of, because of COVID, um, but, yeah. Last fourteen years, yeah. And I'm, you have no idea how grateful I am to those who have said, yeah, I'll be there at ten, ten thirty at night and help you set up, because it makes, it's, it is the definition of many hands making light work, so.
We're both there, and, and you've carried that burden with grace, so, all right.
And, and.
I go home and kick the cats. I don't kick my cats.
All right, any other, anything else under, um, uh, announcements or upcoming events? All right, that takes us to roundtable. Councillor, I should mix it up, councillor Jerry.
Um, I just want to say that I've been really blessed to, uh, have been welcomed so amazingly. Um, I got to sit down with, uh, Manager McKenzie the other day, um, yesterday, we had an amazing conversation. Um, and I'm just really excited to work with you guys, so thank you.
Councillor Shonville.
I pass.
Councillor Booten, pass. Councillor Wasazak.
Uh, we, you know, we discussed it and the mayor had his proclamation as well. I know, I believe the mayor shared it. I know councillor Laozong has shared it, but, um, the fundraiser, uh, for Jim and Larissa Haas and there, which directly benefits folks over in the Ukraine is on my Facebook page, and like I said, I believe others shared it as well, so, you know, even if it's only twenty-five bucks, there's never been a folks are in need right now and that directly goes to them. Um, so check that out. Uh, had a great, just a quick shout out to the, um, police advisory committee. We had a great meeting last night, um, and, you know, it, uh, it's not attendance, that's not the right word, but, uh, membership on that committee has ebbed and flowed. Um, but there's been myself and, you know, three or four other really dedicated folks on that committee for the past nine months or whatever it's been.
We have a, an application for, for.
Yeah, we have at least one more coming in, and I know of a couple other, uh, interested community members, but just, you know, thank you to Chair Bob Nelson and everyone else on that committee. Um, and on a completely personal note, one of our most dedicated citizens is my, um, my fiancee Shirley, who has watched every single city council meeting since I first came on to council. She watches it on CCTV and she has her, um, usually has her pajamas on and is eating popcorn while watching us, and she likes to tell me when I got home how her and I's voting record, uh, compared. She likes to vote on the motions from the house. Uh, and she's on a trip right now and she's using, uh, airplane wifi to watch this meeting right now, which is just like, I know she's biased, but, you know, we have some dedicated citizens here in Barry, and I'll pass.
Thank you, councillor Stockwell.
I'll pass.
Councillor Bluzon.
Don't you pay for airplane wifi by the minute?
I think it's free.
Okay, if it's free, all right, then I could understand if she had to pay one red cent. I, I mean, I really like her, but I asked a question. Uh, I also met with the manager, uh, yesterday, really fascinating guy. It's great to get to know him. Uh, I've been, I've worked my way through the city's budget, through the, thank you Carol for sending me the tip audit. Thank you, Mayor, for sending me the city general fund, uh, audit. Uh, Ben had had a lot of fun over the last week reconnecting with some of the secretaries, uh, and commissioners. I attended the BADC meeting on Monday. Uh, a lot of energy in that room. I look forward to collaborating with them on our economic and housing issues. I agree, he's, he's done an incredible job, Steve. And, uh, you know, lastly, to all of our Irish neighbors, happy St. Patrick's Day on Thursday, but more importantly, the number thirteen ranked UVM cats are taking on four ranked Arkansas. That is going to be a heck of a game. UVM wins, you heard it here first, uh, so we're looking forward to that. And on a bit of a serious note, Mayor, uh, you, you know, Janet in our, uh, planning, zoning and assessing office is so busy and so hardworking. We're coming up on building season. A lot of people are going to be looking to pull building permits. We see it sort of ramping up, uh, you know, already is there's, so I guess manager, mayor, whoever, you know, is, is there any way to get some sort of relief, you know, in that office, whether it's a temp or, or something?
The position is advertised, permits.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Uh, I, I mean, uh, there's that, and then, and there's the assessor position, and I'm pulling my hair out, frankly, on both. Um, so I, I don't have an immediate solution.
I mean, she works, Janet works very hard to make sure permits get processed in a timely manner, but, you know, at a certain point, you burn people out and uh, she, you know, she, she always issues a permit with a smile, but you can't help but be concerned when you see how hard she's working, so. And with that, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
And, uh, and, and do you have a, a bracket filled out?
Uh, you know, I know, I, I don't have the bracket filled out, because if I fill out the bracket, I'm a numbers guy. I'll do the probability. Except when it comes to UVM, ever since, you know, ever since they beat Syracuse, I, I'm just a believer in the program and, you know, I'm a Vermont boy, so.
Uh, Manager McKenzie, do you have something you wanted to share about, uh?
Yes, I did. Uh, Thursday, uh, the, the Chamber of Commerce is putting on its annual St. Patrick's Day breakfast. And they're honoring Bob Nelson, uh, who has just been involved in the community, both from the personal side, the business side, but he's been a actively involved with the municipality over how many years prior to my arrival, he's, he's worked with me, uh, as, uh, well, uh, chair, if you will, of the Deputy Police Chief Search Committee. He started on the, uh, Chiefs Committee, but had to pull out for personal reasons. Uh, he's chair of the, the Police Advisory Committee, uh, and he's been available as a resource to municipal government, city government, as well as the community, so, um, he's, he's, he's an inbred, inbred part of, of our municipality. And I, my, my understanding is it's going to be an overwhelming attendance. And certain councils want to go, uh, just register. That's a reversal expense.
Thank you for sharing that. Uh, and, uh, for me, I have a few items. Um, one, thanks for your patience with me as I, uh, get my bearings a little bit. I, I know I'm going to make some mistakes from time to time, so feel free to correct me, especially this one. And, uh, I'll say, I did see that there, there's going to be a red noses event for Central Vermont at Gusto's, it's Sunday, March twentieth. And starting at five PM, it's a sixty dollar, um, ticket, uh, but it goes to charity, uh, specifically Capstone's Community Kitchen. Um, so that's a, that's a good community event coming up. I shared a, or you may have received a training email from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. They have some upcoming online and in-person trainings on open meeting law, conflicts of interest, um, public records, human resources, the American Rescue Plan Act, as well as, uh, legal, legal matters, and I understand that any of those that, uh, councillor wants to attend, um, they can get, yeah, get reimbursed.
It's just simpler to, for councillors to register online directly. Uh, I think, as I said in an email, uh, there's a question on there that says, are you from a passive community, passive being PACIF? And that's the Property and Casualty Insurance Fund, Berry City is, um, so is it discounted, uh, 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 fee to attend, uh, and then they just build a city directly and, and we just take care of it.
That's a helps limit our liability.
Yeah.
And, and there's also, I sent an email, the Vermont, um, Bond Bank, uh, is doing a capital planning forum, and I know Clerk does send an email about this. Um, when they were first soliciting ideas for capital improvement plans last year, but it's April seventh and eighth from nine to one PM. Um, they'll be going over what's a capital plan, why is it critical to a healthy community? They're going to be giving awards for some of the best, uh, capital plans in Vermont, ensuring best practices from a little big city, uh, how to get started, how to keep going. There's going to be some moderated breakout discussions and options for funding and financing, so that's another good event. And I was cleaning my desk, this big pile of back paper, and I found my outdoor burn permit from last year. So, and I thought, you know, with the snow melting, more people will probably be wanting to have backyard fires. And, uh, and, and if you can remind, it's still twenty dollars this year, right? Chief Friend and, yeah, Deputy Chief Oldsworth, so twenty dollars, and you can come down to the clerk's office and then go over the public safety building and you're ready for some, uh, backyard fires if you have the space for it, right? So.
You can also pay online and then print off the receipt or bring the receipt to the fire department and they will, um, there is the small service charge for paying online, but um, then you can just bring the receipt down and they'll issue the fire permit, so.
Well, and that's it for me. Is there an executive session tonight? No executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? At eight, uh, eight twenty-two.
So moved.
Motion by councillor Wasazak, second by councillor Stockwell, all those in favor, uh, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I'm an aye as well.
I don't think the journey can be discussed.
There we go.